Welcome. I'm Petra Sildin. I'm the Senior Director of Programs for Thrive Alliance. Thrive Alliance is a network of nonprofit, government, business, and community leaders with a shared commitment to strengthening the nonprofit sector, thereby improving the quality of life of our community. Thrive does civic participation through voter engagement, coordination, and outreach. Our candidate forums elevate the most pressing issues of nonprofits and their communities in San Mateo County to mobilize and educate the electorate. Thrive also collaborates closely with nonprofit partners working specifically on children and education issues through our tag meetings and our annual partnerships and education summit, which is co-hosted with the San Mateo County Office of Education and the Stanford Haas Center. This year, the summit will be on February 15th, and the theme is Elevating Racial Justice, and we hope to see you all there.
Well, I'm welcome. I'm Christine Thorstensen. I'm the Director of Early Child Initiatives at Silicon Valley Community Foundation, and I get the incredible privilege of leading our Choose Children project. So, thank you, Petra. On behalf of Choose Children and the Silicon Valley Community Foundation, I want to welcome everybody to tonight's candidate forum. I want to take a moment especially to thank Petra and the great team at Thrive who've worked so hard to put this on. We absolutely are honored to collaborate on this event and other events with Thrive. And I would really like to thank all of our candidates for District 1 and 4 for joining us this evening. I know the last 24, 48 hours have been rather tough in our area, and so I do really appreciate everybody coming out tonight. Choose Children, what is it? So, Choose Children is a nonpartisan and nonendorsing initiative of Silicon Valley Community Foundation. We're a partnership of organizations that are committed to creating a bright future in San Mateo and Santa Clara Counties for our children and families. And our work is to champion babies, toddlers, and preschoolers, and we take the opportunity that is provided by an election to elevate those issues that are important to our young children and families, and make sure that our youngest have a voice in their future. And the reality is that our kids need us. We all know that. We have a responsibility to ensure that young children begin their lives healthy, safe, and ready to succeed in school and life. But, we actually need our kids even more. The economic strength of our region relies on making it a place where families with young children can live and thrive. And when we work together to ensure kids and their families are supported, the impacts are far-reaching and long-lasting. We see better educational and career outcomes for our next generation, greater economic security and mobility for our early-care workforce, and a strengthened local economy. So, we are very proud to host this forum tonight, and we are really excited to be in this beautiful space at the San Mateo Main Library with an in-person audience. Yay! Live Spanish translation services are available if anybody requires those and intending in person. The forum is being recorded in English and in Spanish, and will be available afterwards on YouTube via Thrive Alliance and the Choose Children websites. So, if somebody wanted to come, didn't make it tonight, you can spread the word, and they can still watch it afterwards.
And thank you to our translators this evening, Toni Makhia and Ruby Slover in the back. And to ensure that our Spanish-language interpreters have time to interpret, we ask that all individuals speak clearly and at a moderate pace, including me, I'm the worst. We'll also provide a brief pause between answers to make sure that the interpreters have time to finish their interpretation. En español, si necesita interpretación en español, consulte a la gente de atrás. We're starting with a land acknowledgement. We acknowledge that our office and services operate on the ancestral homeland of the Romata Shaloni tribes, past and present. We honor with gratitude the land itself and the people who have stewarded it throughout the generations. As organizations that are dedicated to advancing equity, practicing empathy, and understanding each other's differences, we aspire to show appreciation, respect, and concern for all connected to this land. We also acknowledge our committed relationship to indigenous peoples, and we gratefully acknowledge our history. Please ask you to silence your phones for everyone in the audience. So, the primary is actually already started. You can vote starting today. Very exciting. Day one of voting between now and March 5th. Please fill out your ballots. The top two vote-getters will move on to the general election in November. If one candidate receives 50% plus one vote, that candidate will win the election in the primary, and there will not be an election in November. The term of office is four years. This is a nonpartisan and nonendorsing event, which aims to provide voters with information for the candidates so that they can make informed decisions when voting. Therefore, we ask that all of you in the room keep all expressions of support or opposition quiet for today's forum in order to allow each candidate to equally and fairly express their views.
So, we would like to begin by introducing the candidates this evening in alphabetical order. So, running for District 1, Anne Schneider, seated down here, and not in attendance tonight is Jackie Spear. And then, running for District 4, we have Paul Boca Negra, Celeste Brevard, Maggie Conejo, Lisa Gaultier, and soon to be here, Antonio Lopez. So, he will be here shortly. And running for District 5, but not in attendance tonight, and running unopposed, is David Canapo. So, for tonight's forum, we will have, each candidate will have 60 seconds to answer the questions, and then for our lightning round, you'll have 30 seconds for responses. You'll be given notice at 30 seconds and at 15 seconds, and then stop. And when you see the stop sign, please complete your sentence and end your remarks. We will not be playing the, you know, the music at the Grammys to knock you off, but we ask that you please take a moment to stop. And then, we ask that everybody remain seated during the duration of our conversation. Just to know, in order to decide the speaking order for the candidate for this evening, candidate names were drawn at random in advance using the Secretary of State's randomizing tool, and further questions were randomized via a randomizing app. So, Petra, any questions about how we're going to proceed? Great. Thank you. Petra, I'll turn it over to you to get us started.
And we have a timer in the front so that you know, a live-action timer, so you know how much time you have left. The first question is going to be for all the candidates, and you'll have 60 seconds to answer. And unlike a traditional forum, we are not doing an opening statement because we have a very specific topic tonight, so we're just going to go straight into the questions. So, San Mateo County is an amazing place to grow up, and I know many of you did grow up here, with virtually limitless opportunities, but it's also one that's increasingly difficult financially to raise a family. In a recent public opinion survey by Choose Children, 82% of likely county voters said that, quote, "Elected officials should prioritize policies that make San Mateo County a place where families with young children can live and thrive." So, we'd like to begin this evening by asking, as county supervisor, how and why will you prioritize this essential community expectation? I will just go in order and call you each. So, Lisa first?
Thank you. So, for me, I have a grandson that's here, so his future is very important to me. And when you think about his development, it is so important that we have childcare that's going to be readily available. I've watched firsthand the amount of money that it takes to make sure that he is taken care of. They live with me, and that, the cost of childcare can be a barrier for so many. So, what are we doing to have guaranteed income? As a Board of Supervisors, we should have guaranteed income and individual, and opportunities to make sure that there are going to be help with childcare, and ensuring that there are enough childcare spots that are going to be available within the county. We know that we don't have enough spots right now, and if we want our children to be healthy, we will invest in what's important to us, and our youth should be the most valuable asset that we have, so investing in their future is imperative.
Thank you. Also, I forgot to mention at the beginning that we asked the candidates what they would like to be called, and they chose to be called by their first names. So, with that, I'll turn it to Maggie.
This is on, okay, it's on. Hi, everyone. Hi, everyone. So, for me, it would be making sure that we're investing in economic development for families as well as early childhood development. I'm a product of District 4. I feel like I could have benefited myself from services in my early childhood, and it wasn't until I was about 10, no, 12-years-old, middle-school age where I realized that I didn't really know how to speak English. I was born here, and I should have known how to speak English as well as feel comfortable reading and writing, and I didn't have that support. And I was at the top of my class in public school, so it's not like I was slacking or anything like that. I really think that we need to invest in programming, so that's why investing in children and families is one of my priorities, and that's just one part of it. I'd love to talk to you all more on what my vision is for children, but I wanted to let you guys know this.
Thank you. Paul?
Thank you so much. Many of you know my story. My parents were child migrant workers, and they watched their son become a child prisoner in adult institutions. System-impacted as an adult growing up in an institution. Since my return home after surviving that horrible experience for a crime I didn't commit, I turned my focus on to the juvenile justice, criminal justice system, and how it treats its youth. Specifically, I also started taking a look at what programs existed here in San Mateo County, and learned more than 50% of our foster kids exist outside of county lines. We have no investment in that. We have no drug and alcohol inpatient programs, detox facilities for youth, like a fentanyl crisis doesn't exist here in San Mateo County. Youth have been forgotten. They have been mistreated. They're suffering food insecurity, education insecurity, housing insecurity, and I think that it's time that San Mateo begin to turn its focus on how we can better improve the next generation coming up behind us. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Paul. Antonio, come on in. Celeste?
Okay, so, there's a lot to cover here because it's also including how to make sure that we can keep families here, right? So, I agree with all of my colleagues, there's a lot that we can do to improve the lives of our children with programming. We need to close the gap in subsidies provided from the state for childcare because there's obviously a gap in what's being provided and what is actually needed. We also need to worry about our children's education, right? Even if they are getting care, there is still gaps in the education that they're receiving and the quality of that education which we need to address. And then, we also need to take a look at the affordability of living here, which is hopefully something that you can find out more of our stances on in other ways because I only have 30 seconds. But, also making sure that people can live here based on the affordability of the area. So, there's different things that we can do on that, which hopefully we can dive into later, but this is a multifaceted issue, that there are different ways that we need to take a look at solving this problem.
Thank you, Celeste. Anne?
Thank you. The county has more money than the cities. It has more money than the school districts. It has more money than the food, second harvest, and places like that. So, supervisor, what I would do is first of all, look at all five districts and make sure that we know where all of the resources are, the facilities are. I will tell you as someone who grew up in District 1, we're kind of the forgotten north. We don't have a lot of the nonprofit agencies that the South County has. So, let's find those entities, and then let's use Measure K and other county funds to do everything that everyone else has said here, and thank you for letting me go a little bit at the end to see how everybody is doing it, to make sure that we do have a guaranteed income, to make sure that everyone is getting fed, to make sure that we have enough spots. And I have direct experience in creating childcare at city facilities. So, let's use the county money, working in partnership with the nonprofit sector, the other cities, and the businesses to build more spots so everyone has care. Thank you.
Thank you, Anne. Antonio, we're going to give you the short version of the question. As county supervisor, how and why will you prioritize making San Mateo County a place where families and with young children can live and thrive?
Absolutely. Well, thank you first of all for your patience. I was driving up the 101, and there was an accident, so thank you for your time, and I hope your families are staying safe with the floods, first and foremost. That's the first thing. My name is Antonio Lopez, Mayor for East Palo Alto. That being said, look, there is no silver bullet for this, just like with housing, just like with infrastructure. The needs and the scarcity and the lack of unmet spaces that we're continuing to see for children necessitates us working together. Any elected official who says, "This is how it's going to get done, this one-and-seat", it's not true. I just came from a nice 65-week street project where we took over a dozen funding of over 20 years to get this happen. Now, it's not going to take 20 years. It's going to be investing in our school districts. So, I was part of Measure W, or at least supported bringing in almost $600 million for our school districts because, get this, there were some buildings that had been there since World War II, right? It's also about investing in early childcare providers, right? They're getting underpaid. The median age of people leaving this industry are 18 to 39-year-olds, so we need to tell people that this is just as important as a startup, as Google, as Apple. It's about serious investments. There's more I can say, but my time expired, so thank you.
Thank you. Many of you actually alluded to the topic of our next question, which digs into childcare specifically. Parents with children in San Mateo County are being forced to make very difficult financial and lifestyle decisions in order to find and afford quality childcare. In a recent Choose Children survey, parents report reducing essential spending, using emergency savings, delaying decreasing retirement savings to pay for childcare. Most say that they had to change jobs, limit work hours, leave work early, work alternate hours, even some reported declining a promotion in order to afford childcare. 73% of county voters think that the county government is responsible for ensuring that families in our community have access to high-quality, affordable childcare. So, what will you do to help build early learning and care capacity and give all parents in our county quality childcare options? And Paul, we'll start with you.
Thank you so much. I can tell you, the first thing that is lacking here are facilities where we can have our children be safely looked after. My first intention would be to cooperate and collaborate, excuse me, with school districts and churches. We know there's excess spaces there. These are safe places that we should start looking to invest in childcare facilities. Also, we need to begin providing incentives to those who would like to create their LLC in childcare providing. I think that they are underserved, they are underrated, but they are doing a very critical job in helping raise our next generation. So, I think fighting for space and looking for the safest spaces in our county to raise our children and investing in those spaces. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Paul. Anne, we'll turn to you next.
Thank you. City of Millbrae, where I'm mayor, current council member, we built a new rec center. We were hoping to get a loan from the county, but that fell through during COVID. So, we built the rec center, but we also built a certified childcare center. And it took a year after it was constructed to get the approval from the state of California, believe it or not, for the playground equipment. So, we could not bring children in. So, what I would do as your supervisor is identify, just what the other gentleman said, "Let's find all the locations, let's get rid of the red tape that it takes to open up certified daycare center, and then let's support the workers by giving them much above a living wage," and something that I stole from your meeting, "let's start creating a retirement package for our childcare workers."
Thank you. Celeste?
Yeah, so, I think that you mentioned a lot of the things that people are giving up to for their childcare. One thing during your presentation that you gave that really stood out to me was people having to quit their jobs and people having to decline healthcare for their children to afford taking childcare. And that's not something that should be happening in this county. So, we clearly have a gap in the amount of services that we have and the amount of services that are needed. So, we need, we have people here also, obviously, that are willing and would like to fill these gaps. So, we need to, in order to create these facilities, train people, and give them the certification so that they can then help with this issue that we have and help with that supply and demand. We obviously need to work on the facilities as well, and we need to be making sure that we're paying everybody an attractive wage to do this work. This is important work that is taking care of our children, and like they have shared with us, and something that I know from studying early childhood development, the first five years in a child's life is really important for them, and we need to make sure that we're setting them up for future success.
Thank you. Lisa?
Yes, so, excuse me, my voice is a little crackly, but it's important that, again, we invest in our youth, have programs where it's subsidized, that we're, again, I agree with others, how do we pay our teachers and those who are taking care of our precious little people the money that they should be getting? It should be not, they should not be getting the lowest pay, but the highest pay because you are preparing our future leaders for success. So, how do we, again, I'm going to go back to some type of guaranteed income, how do we increase the amount of money that you're getting? How do we invest more in the licensing board so that we are licensing more centers and we have more spots? Right now, there are more young people who need daycare than we have space for, so we need that space to make sure that families can participate in the innovation economy and continue to go to work.
Thank you. Maggie?
There's a lot of people in the unincorporated area of District 4, which is North Fair Oaks, that take care of, like, it's like the neighbor down the street, that's where you drop off your child, or that's how I grew up in the childcare system. I think we need to empower those people to go experience their entrepreneurship because that's what they are, they're business people, and we need to make sure as the county that we are providing pathways where they can grow their business and become these childcare little huddles in the, you know, pockets of this neighborhood, as well as make sure that we're investing in programs that are expanding the criteria, because I think right now, to qualify for certain assistance for childcare, you need to make a certain amount of money. But the reality is that many of us need that help. We need to expand that criteria so that we're helping that gap of people that could benefit.
Thank you. And Antonio?
Well, first of all, we've got to remove the basic barriers that people are spending. I want you to know something. Forget my name, forget my last name. Remember this. Families spend low income in this county. In this county, they spend 14%, you ready for this? Diapers. So, 14% of the low-income families, that's right, man, 14% of the income is spent on diapers. So, how do we give basic subsidies? I'm proudly on the Board of Rise, right? Those little bluehouses that we're talking about, putting more Measure K funding and not having 500 organizations fighting for one piece of funding would be important, too. Secondly, we have to go to the state. I can't emphasize this enough. We have to go to the state and increase the reimbursements that early childcare facilities are facing. We know that because of the universal expansion of TK, these childcare centers are burdened with trying to fill in more of their coffers, and they're just not making enough bank. So, we need to go to the state and say, "Yeah, you got a deficit, but you know what's more important than that? Our future workforce, our kids, our infants, our toddlers." It says a lot about this country and state that we're not doing that. We need to aggressively expand that, and the county should be ally in that.
So, for our next set of questions, we're going to do something different because we have so many candidates. The next two questions, there are only going to be three candidates who answer each one. So, for the question I'm about to ask, it's going to be Celeste, Maggie, and Paul. So, here's my question. We know that when babies, toddlers, and young children are engaged in robust early learning, they have better educational and economic outcomes, and they pass those advantages on to their own children. Yet, only half the children locally are ready for school on their first day, and the achievement gap ripples out from that point forward. What would you do as county supervisor to help prepare our children so that they are ready to learn on their first day of school? Celeste?
Thank you for that question. So, like I had just mentioned in my last statement, we are essentially talking tonight about preparing the future of our county, right? All of the children are the future of the county. So, in order to do that, we have to make sure that they're getting the care that they need. If people, if these children are receiving stimulation to enrich their minds, they're not going to be prepared. And as Maggie was saying, some of that can also be language barriers from the parents that are taking care of the children and not knowing the resources that are out there as well. So, making sure that we're getting the information out in the languages that everybody understands in terms of where resources are available, what care facilities are available, and then again, providing that funding and closing those gaps in the amount of places that are prepared to care for those children, and making sure that it's quality care so that we can make sure that all of our youth are ready for school on their first day and can continue to succeed.
Thank you. Paul?
Thank you so much. Children begin learning much earlier while in the mother's womb, and I think that doing outreach and ensuring that mothers are properly nutrition, eating the proper nutrition so that their kids' cortisol level do not rise before they are born, I think that outreach is also extremely important. We have to ensure that everyone's basic needs are being met in order for, in order to ensure that our youth are going to be born into a safety net, meaning that the village will be intact and investing in their futures. Free childcare, universal childcare, that is the best way we prepare our next generation to take step into our communities and be productive and want to stay. Thank you.
Maggie?
Partnership is, partnership is really important, and I've learned through my experience working with District 4 that there are so many great nonprofit organizations that have a huge following of people, and that's residents-first, instinct is to go to this credible source. I would, as supervisor, invest in programs where we can have, not just for mothers, but families, include all of the family, where we can educate on how do you prepare to develop your child's mind. A lot of the times, I think that there is a language barrier, there is a learning gap, and investing in these programs, like, for example, having one at the Fair Oaks Library could be one, and people could come and the right doctors or therapists or whoever is needed to implement what kind of steps we need to take for the kids to be able to grow up in the best way possible.
Thank you. For this next question, it'll be Antonio, and then followed by Anne and Lisa. Oh, convenient, you're all sitting right there. So, we know, and we've talked about it a little bit, that children who have secure housing, nutritious food, they feel safe and loved, have time and places to play and explore, they reap the benefits of those supports throughout their entire lifetime. And likewise, those who experience trauma, instability, and uncertainty in their very basic needs may carry these burdens with them for life. So, what are your plans to ensure that basic needs are met and the well-being of our county's children and youth? And we'll start with you, Antonio.
Well, first and foremost, housing, right? These issues are not just affecting the child, it's the parents. So, having affordable housing for workforce teachers, right? So, the teachers who sit every single day, you'd be surprised how many teachers don't actually live in your kid's neighborhood. So, incentivizing workforce housing for teachers is critical, and you would not believe that there are some neighborhoods that don't necessarily invest in that. So, we have to make sure working with cities to pass workforce housing is critical. Number two, private-public partnerships. I'm so pleased that during the city council, one of the first things we did, I got you, during COVID was looking at activating our summer parks through a partnership I helped secure through the Chan Zuckerberg initiatives. We helped bring one of the earliest summer activation programs, so older folks, younger folks were playing in the parks in a time when the country and globe didn't know how to stay active. So, it's really being tenacious. It's about working on housing, it's about private-public partnerships. That's going to help us to maintain the quality of life for all residents in this county.
Thank you. Anne?
Thank you. The county is the keeper of a great deal of money, so it's Measure K that can be used for housing, it's community development block grants, and most people are not aware that the county gets all of the small-city portions for that, and then they deal with whichever nonprofits they don't. What I would do is make sure that the community development block grants get to every city and that each one of our people are worth the same. Small cities were only worth about $750, medium-sized city, $1,250, and the 13 big cities in California, $1,750. Community development block grants are the money cities can use to build affordability. But the second thing I would do as a county supervisor is look at everybody who's at risk of losing their current housing and make sure that we're giving them vouchers. It doesn't have to be Section 8, it can be anything else, and we make sure we keep people in their homes. The third thing, some of the new state housing laws have taken away a city's ability to give first, first dibs, for want of a better word, of the affordable housing that we're all, are building. We're losing eight affordable units to build 11, and we couldn't keep our own Millbrae people in those housing units because of SB 330. We have to recognize that cities want to be a good player in the team, but we need the county to work with us. Thank you.
Again, thank you for that question. You know, in order to protect families and take care of individuals, we need to do, make sure that families have trainings and they can be upskilled into careers that are going to be able to take care of them. We need to, as a leader, invest in those food insecurity programs that make sure that families are getting food as needed. Continue to build affordable housing and create programs that will probably be looking at some type of rental assistance, because many families, it takes a car to break down, or medical emergency, or something to happen where you cannot pay your rent. How do we help those families so that families with children are not ending up on the street? Those are some of the things that are going to be important for ensuring that families stay here, they're taken care of, and again, I'm going to go back to guaranteed income. And again, I'm going to go back to guaranteed income. When we can put money into those families, that is going to help families so much.
Thank you. Now we get to do the fun part. So as you all know, we're going to do a lightning round. So you have 30 seconds to answer. You don't have to take all 30 seconds, but you have 30 seconds to answer. And the purpose of this is, first of all, to give the audience a break, a little bit fun stuff, but also so that they can get to know you because your personality and who you are is going to matter as well as you're working with your fellow supervisors. So I'm, we're going to do this very fast and we're just going to keep the same order. So first question, what did you want to be when you were little? Maggie?
When I was little, I wanted to be a doctor. And then I realized that me and science don't really go together. So then I, actually from a young age, I always knew I wanted to be in politics. So that was my next thing.
Paul?
I wanted to be a lawyer. And that is something that I've had the privilege of doing. I've litigated, something that people don't know. In every single layer of the courtroom, from small claims all the way to the United States Supreme Court, where I have been someone who has also prosecuted the state of California for a cruel and unusual condition. So I've been in every courtroom. There's case law with my name on it. And that's something I'm very proud of. Thank you.
Celeste?
CEO. So you know, we just like to keep it realistic at my house. So I always have been really interested in where I can have the most impact. So when I was young, that was just being the boss, right? If you were the boss, then you could tell people what to do and make sure that everybody had what they needed and everybody would be happy. So that was the goal. And I mean, this position is sort of like a CEO of part of the district of the county. So made for it.
Anne?
I wanted to be an astronaut. I'm of that generation that if you had glasses, you couldn't. And to be honest, women weren't going to get there. I wanted to be an Olympian swimmer. I got as far as swimming for UCLA. But I had a seventh grade science teacher who took us to plant trees at Big Basin. And I work in the environmental field. I am so happy that I work in this field and I want to plant trees.
Lisa?
You know, often you can't be what you can't see. So my mother was a teacher, teachers aid at Ravenswood High School. I wanted to be a teacher. Didn't go that way. But we have to expose our children to more opportunities in these low-income areas so that they can think broader than what's right in front of them.
Antonio?
Beautifully said. This may be a bit of a shocker, but an astronaut? Like Anne was saying, I went to school at Ronald Edison McNair. He was one of the first African-Americans to be in NASA. And I remember being in the principal, I was being like, what does a black dude with an astronaut suit? You know, and no one ever told us. But we were of that generation where, like Lisa said, you know, we, in East Palo Alto, we have so many role models. And I just always thought, man, that must be a cool dude. So I just, for a long time, I was like, I'm going to try to be an astronaut.
Question two, what is your favorite holiday tradition in your district? Maggie?
So I grew up in the unincorporated area. And every December, we used to go to something called Las Mañanitas on Middlefield Road. So if you're from that area, you know exactly what I'm talking about. We would meet at 5:00 in the morning and by the train tracks and walk as a community to St. Anthony's and do, celebrate the Virgin Mary. And then everybody would get together and then go have donuts across the street. Parents wouldn't go to work. And it still goes on. So that was probably one of my favorite memories.
Paul?
Fourth of July, when I came home on Sapphire Living Eagle Hill and on the street Sapphire, every Fourth of July, they have barbecue, a street barbecue. And even during COVID, that's been something that I had never experienced until I moved here to San Mateo County. And it's very inclusive and welcoming and I really appreciate those spaces. Thank you.
Celeste?
This is a hard one for me because Redwood City seems to go all out for everything. So I really enjoy all of the displays that they do for all of the holidays. When we first came here, it was around October. And so it was Halloween and they lit up the big building right in the middle of Redwood City with all of the different decorations and pumpkins and everything. And I just really like that they get everybody involved with everything and have street fairs that are very inclusive for everybody. So I'd love to see more of that.
Anne?
I would say Halloween because it's my favorite and I do a Halloween event for the kids of Millbrae every year. But I think it's festivals. I think one of the things we learned from COVID was just how much we need to be with each other. And I am proud of my city and so many of the other cities that have musical events now that bring people together, bring different music together. Bring us with whatever culture we come from to learn from each other. We had our first Juneteenth event last year. And the drums and the participation with the drums. So to me, festivals and having fun with each other.
Antonio?
The unofficial East Palo Alto fireworks show. Just kidding. See, I got one joke to land in all my debates. So now I feel successful. No, seriously. You know, when I was a kid, we always had East Palo Alto Police Department show up. And it always felt, and I know policing is a huge issue, but in East Palo Alto, I think we're getting it right. And when I was a kid, they always had an annual bike giveaway. Like you'd go to City Hall and you just had these officers just give bikes away. And it was like the craziest thing. And everyone was like rushing for it. And I don't, we don't realize how powerful it was from a young age, seeing folks in badges, not feeling scared. And I always remember that.
Lisa?
I like all holidays, but the one that's standing out is the Fourth of July because it is close to East Palo Alto's incorporation, is when we incorporated. I love the fireworks. My kids know I will go wherever to get fireworks. Disneyland's my favorite if I can see fireworks. But that is important and it brings around family. And when I was, I was able to participate in Redwood City's parade this year and to see all of the residents from everywhere, sitting on sidewalks or standing and participating in that holiday and being patriotic means a lot.
And I'm going to reverse the order for our next two lightning round questions. So starting with Lisa, what did you play during recess in elementary school?
Oh, was it four square or something? Whenever they had the little, the four square with the ball. So that was what I played.
Antonio?
We used to go in a circle and start rapping, me and the kids. I was on the basket, I sucked at basketball, okay? I was a shooting guard. But me, Michael, Keith, Devonte, like Kanye was like not problematic then, still. So we used to like, I think graduation came out that third album. So Deion would be like, la, 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 wait till I get. And I'm going to go, oh, and then somebody else would rap. So like, we just rapped. And I think that's how I fell in love with language.
Anne?
Okay, I grew up in Pacifica, so we got to milk the cows across the street from Lindemar. But tetherball and four square.
Celeste?
Okay, so when we were not making up games, just out of nowhere, we were playing really competitive handball. The one where you have the ball that goes against the wall. There was some intense competition at my elementary school. And that kind of gave you like street cred if you could win the handball tournament.
Paul?
My favorite was kickball. My, my parents, Mexican immigrants, used to dress me like a cowboy. And that meant wearing cowboy boots. And I'm not sure whether it was the boots or whether it had strong legs, but they would hear those things clunking and everybody would be like, we want Paul. So I was included in. Thank you.
Maggie?
I used to be, I used to be really competitive. So I'd play anything, like wherever I would see the guys huddling, I would go and try to prove a point that I was just as good. So I'd play basketball, four square, kickball. We would sometimes just race one-on-one just to show them that I was better. But I think the most joy that I got was the monkey bars. I was like that girl that had blisters from the monkey bars. So yeah.
I had blisters from the monkey bars, too. Okay, last lightning round question. Starting with Lisa, what was your favorite storybook as a child?
Ooh, good, good question. What was my favorite storybook as a child? I can't think of my favorite storybook as a child, but I can think of the favorite storybook I liked to read my grandson. And it's The Amazing Airplane. The Amazing Airplane is what we read a lot. And Nana Loves You are the two books that we read a lot.
Antonio?
There's two, the Choose Your Own Adventure for Goosebumps. Remember that? Those were fire. And every time my dad, I'd be like, no, I didn't leave the page. I'm not dead yet. That way in case I wanted to go back to life and choose my own adventure. And then I, I just thought of this the other day, too, so it's funny you mention it. Remember The Hatchet by Gary Poulsen? That's a classic. Like that kid is going places. Where he just survives in the wilderness. I was so engrossed with that book.
Anne?
I don't know if I can remember that far back. There was a book about a little Mexican boy and fireworks company. And I've never been able to find it. I read at our local elementary schools and I bought Dragons Love Tacos. So I know I'm a little bit more current on that one. And my favorite one for the older kids is Stone Soup.
Celeste?
Yeah, I'm trying to think of my favorite. To be honest, I am the oldest of all of my cousins and everything. So I feel like I'm just remembering everything I've read to them. And I have to say, there's some really great children's books out there today about female empowerment with Ruth Bader Ginsburg and about hidden figures. But I would read anything that was, you know, fantasy. So I loved The Spiderwick Chronicles and pretty much anything I could get my hands on, I would read.
Paul?
Yes, my mom received her GED when I think I was about 12 years old. She began educating herself. But the one book that she would always read, I'm not sure if you've heard of it, is called Clifford the Big Red Dog. And that, that was my book. And you know, I held on to that book until, I can't even remember how, but that was my favorite book. Thank you.
I loved all the Dr. Seuss books, but my favorite was Green Eggs and Ham. My brother used to, my older brother, I have an older brother, used to read that to me because my parents, we had a language barrier. So it was, my parents could either read to me in Spanish or I would get Green Eggs and Ham from Hector, my brother.
Well, thank you all so much for sharing all those fun little tidbits. I learned some new books and some were old favorites of mine. So thanks for sharing. Okay, we will move on back to our general questions. And this question will be asked by all of the candidates. So in San Mateo County, youth mental health is a huge issue with significant disparities in who is affected the most. Youth who identify as transgender, bi-potable female have higher rates of depression and suicide ideation. Unfortunately, there are multiple threats to the funding and health of our behavioral health system, including from Proposition 1. What is one key priority that you will pursue to continue to move forward towards a fully responsive county behavioral health system for youth and the greater community? And Maggie will start with you.
So through my work at the County of San Mateo, specifically with District Four, I was able to develop a series of mental health workshops. And that included women's well-being as well as just a general mental health. And the purpose of that was to break the stigma that sometimes there is in communities and bring education and awareness. So as supervisor, I want to reassure you all that mental health, not just for youth, but for all of the residents in San Mateo County, is one of my top priorities. I want to invest in family therapy versus just like one-on-one therapy. Want to make sure that the therapists that are serving our communities can relate and have a cultural understanding with those around them and have a therapist that goes to community members versus the old school going into a session. So that means partnering with the nonprofits that are serving the district already and building those relationships so that it becomes very common for people to seek these resources.
Celeste?
Thank you so much for this question. So this is something that we're seeing impacting a lot of people, especially after COVID. This is a big problem at Stanford as well with the mental health of all of our students. And I think that what it really comes down to is investing in these programs, investing in mental health and making sure that we're providing the resources needed to make everybody feel supported. And with that also comes creating safe spaces for these different communities to come together. So I work on the LGBTQ plus committee at Stanford for their pride. And I think really just having a space where everybody can come together, express themselves for who they fully are and have a little bit of fun as well is really important. It is very important to invest in all of the mental health programs. Don't get me wrong, that's a huge focus of mine. But I also think we just need more spaces for people to get together, to express themselves, to meet other people who are experiencing some of the same issues that they're going through so that there's a support system among their peers as well.
Thank you. Antonio, we'll go to you.
Well, definitely investing in those traditional organizations like One Life Counseling. Maggie brought up a good point. Having culturally competent counseling is so critical, right? We're seeing a more diverse district and every community has their own stigma. As a young Latino male, we're not taught to express ourselves. So how do we reach out to those demographics, race and gender, that are having more trouble reaching in, right? So we got to go where people are at. And on that note, I also think promoting arts and culture is important. You'd be surprised. It's not just the traditional therapy sessions, but to quote Belinda Ariaga, the executive director of ALAS, which is an organization based in Hafnum Bay, cultura cura, meaning culture cures. So teaching young students to talk about their pride and their heritage and history is equally as important as any traditional model of mental health. We need to have a bifurcated approach. We're investing in those mental health centers like the atrium or One Life Counseling. But also, given our beautiful diversity, how are we really speaking the language of those populations that for too long have been in the shadows?
Thank you. Anne, we'll go to you next.
I love cultural cure. Thank you for that. My community that I represent is 68% Asian. And the actual highest suicide rate right now is with Asian men. So I think what we need to do is really figure out how to reach out to all of our cultures because some feel more comfortable speaking out or asking for help than others. And we have many cultures that need that help on that. So whether that's through their church, their social clubs, I think the county can do a broader reach out to these groups to make sure that it's okay to come and speak. But I absolutely do love art and culture as another way of healing and expressing ourselves and just being cognizant. Again, the county is very diverse. The farther you go north, the more Asian we get. So we need to make sure we're also reaching out to our very varied Asian population. And over 60% of our population are foreign-born. So we need to speak where they come from, not where they are.
Thank you. Lisa?
Yes, I know, my daughter is a marriage family therapist. So if I get this wrong, I'm in big trouble tonight. So it's really normalizing the conversation. Having people asking, how are you, how are you doing? I know just last week Sesame Street and Elmo did a whole thing where they're asking young people, how are you? Making that normal. And then, you know, a lot of our, when it comes to mental health, a lot of the issues that our youth are facing is with social media. So really tracking that and making sure that they are not exposed too much to social media to where they feel like they are not being protected, they're not being heard, or they're being bullied. So addressing bullying in the, in the community. And when you think about health equity, let's make sure we're paying for those spots for the mental health therapists and teachers and counselors that can spot something that's wrong and they'll know how to address and work with students.
Thank you. And Paul, we'll give you the last word on this.
Thank you. Yes. So when we talk about mental health and youth, we have to ask, how are they witnessing their parents being treated? Because that affects how we grow up in the community. And right now, Maslow's hierarchy of needs is not even being met by our leadership right now. We have displacement, food insecurity, we incarcerate addiction, we incarcerate mentally ill, and now we're incarcerating the homeless. And again, who is going to be impacted by this? Our youth. We have 30 unhoused kids attending Kennedy Middle School in my neighborhood. How does that impact their mental health? We don't even have to guess how that impacts them. And I think we have a lot of work to do. Thank you.
So I've done a lot of candidate forums. Probably this is the first time we've brought up Elmo. I appreciate it. So our next question is for everybody and it's about after-school. First of all, I see a lot of after-school providers in the audience, so thank you for being here. Nonprofit out-of-school programs take the lead in providing vital programming and support for under-resourced children. So what would you do as supervisor to help support these programs? Anne?
First of all, especially for our low-income community, is that we could use county funding to help subsidize the after-school programs on that or pay for it flat out. It's better to have our kids in a place with adult supervision than being by themselves. So it's, you spend some money up here, but you save a whole lot there. And I say that because our rec center was burned down by a 13-year-old getting into trouble. So let's keep kids, let's keep them active. And I think the county has a great spot on that. I think all of our rec centers, someone else brought up churches, any of the other community partners that have space. We could do a lot more for after-school activities. I'll tell you, in my community, I'm a little bit more worried that they go from school to school to school, education, 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 and not enough play. So making sure that we're balancing play with that for good mental health.
Thank you, Celeste.
Yeah, so I think that there is a lot of promising programs already in the county, but I think there's some gaps in some areas such as green spaces and getting children outside. I think it was your study that showed that only 11% of children are getting 60 minutes of play outside, which is very disturbing to me. I think that providing green spaces and teaching kids about the importance of our connection with nature, creating community gardens, of our connection with nature, creating community gardens, is all very important to their well-being, and it's actually been proven to help improve their well-being overall and their retention for education. So we definitely need to improve access to green spaces. And we also have such a resource-rich area for various internships and things like that. So we should create connections between the private businesses and the non-